Score on their ACT and one student with a perfect score on the SAT. Four of the students you're about to meet scored a 36, the highest possible score on the ACT college admission and placement exam. Nationally, while the actual number of students earning a composite score of 36 varies from year to year, in 2011, more than 1.6 million students took the exam and less than 1% received a perfect score. It's an amazing number. Tonight, you'll also meet a student who earned a perfect score of 2,400 on the SAT. In 2011, nearly 1.65 million students took the SAT and only 384, or .023%, of the students scored a perfect 2,400. The SAT and ACT tests assess skills that students learn in school and that are critical for success in college and beyond. At this time, I'd like to please welcome Tim McCarthy, principal of Central High, who will introduce his student from Central High who scored the perfect ACT. Tim McCarthy.
It's my great pleasure to introduce Thomas Hack from Central High this evening. Thomas, if you would please come forward.
For those of you that don't know, I am new and my role is building principal and it's not very often you get to introduce yourself to a student and say, "Great job" and "Thanks for the perfect ACT." But that's essentially my interaction with Thomas here recently. I've gotten to know him a little bit. He's a tremendous young man, participates in the band and jazz choir and just does a-- the jazz band, I'm sorry, and does a fantastic job for us and we're really excited that he's a part of Central and represents us so well. Thank you, Thomas. This time, I'm going to ask Dr. Karen Calcaterra, Assistant Principal at North High, to come down and introduce her students.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening. It is with a great pleasure that I have the privilege of introducing two exceptional students this evening. The first student is Timothy Thai, Tim Thai, who received a perfect score on the ACT. Tim and his parents are here this evening, so I welcome them. Tim is a National Merit semifinalist. He's enrolled in rigorous courses. He's a member of Mu Alpha Theta Academic Challenge Robotics and the Recycling Club. So let's give Tim a round of applause. The second student this evening that we would like to honor from North High is Manali Goklay. Manali earned a perfect score on the SAT. She was also a National Merit semifinalist. She's the president of Mu Alpha Theta. She participates in academic challenge competitions and she is part of the nationally recognized Envirothon team. So let's give a round of applause for Manali Goklay. I am also the grade level principal for both Manali and Tim and it has been my pleasure to work with them and I'm honored to be their principal for the last four years. And at this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Jeremy Mitchell from West High.
Thomas, Tim, Manali, let me tell you, that's a great honor. Congratulations to all of you. It really is quite remarkable to be surrounded by such scholars here, especially if you knew when I got on my SAT, but we won't go there. The two individuals who I'm most familiar with hail from West High and I'd like to introduce them at this time. First of all, and I'm glad that he got here rushing in from across country meet, I want to introduce Andrew Keenly. Andrew. And along with Andrew, West High is mighty proud of Kirti Bandi, who also received a
This time, I'd like the parents in the room of the students who represent tonight to please stand and be recognized as well. We thank you for your contributions. Once again, congratulations, students.
This is really a wonderful accomplishment for these wonderful young people and of course, their parents are immensely proud of them and sometimes, as parents, we know that they do a lot more than what we anticipate. But everyone is happy and I know you parents are too. I wish I could say that I could even be in their class, but I remember when I ran for the junior class presidency, my speech was "A students, B students, C students, D students, and my friends." Anyway, congratulations again to them and congratulations to the Cardinals who will go on to Philadelphia to see if they can--
Is that right?
Yes. And I don't want to take anything away from those kids because what they've accomplished is phenomenal as any student can do. So thank you again. Yes, you don't feel like you have to stay for the rest of our meeting unless you're really into education. Let's see. 4.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda, there are none. 5.0 citizen statements, there are none. 6.0 call for an executive session, none. And 7.0 approval of the agenda for October 5th, 2011. May I have a motion and a second?
Salute.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. Resolutions. 8.0 resolutions. Fire Prevention Week, October 10th through the 14th. National School Lunch Week, October 10th through the 14th. I understand lunches are improving in many schools. Also, resolution for America's Safe Schools Week, October 17th through the 21st. Bus Safety Week, also October 17th through the 21st. And finally, a resolution for Disability History and Awareness Month. May I have a motion and a second to adopt these resolutions?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. 9.0 communications. 9.01, calendar of meetings. The next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, November 2nd, 2011, here at Central Middle School, starting at 7:30 PM. 9.02 liaison reports. Is there-- are there any reports from the rest of the board that they would like to express at this time?
Just mentioned that many of us have attended the meetings at Craig, McKelvey &amp; Ross and we're listening and we're working on the boundary issue and we've had a pretty good turnout so far and the parents have been pretty receptive and it's just interesting to hear comments, so.
Thank you. Please.
I attended the Missouri School Board Association Conference this past weekend in Lake of Ozarks with Dr. Marty and with Dr. Centi and it was a wonderful conference. There were so many great sessions. I think we all learned just an absolute ton. It fascinates me to hear some of these success stories that other school districts have and, you know, we come back with all this information. We're so eager to share it, so just looking forward to next year's conference, hoping it's not on my religious holiday once again.
Yes.
And Beth did provide the rest of us with several pages of single-spaced notes. She's elevating the level of the entire board, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, Beth.
Overachiever.
Any others saying anything? No, thank you. 10.0 action items consent. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent items 10.01, 10.02, 10.03, 10.04, 10.05, 10.06, 10.07, 10.08, 10.09, 10.10, 10.11, and 10.12.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions or any items that should be pulled for discussion? Not seeing any? Let me ask then, all in favor to approve these consent items?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? These consent items carry 5-0.
And Mr. President, I think there's one item under 10.03 that I need to abstain from, but I don't have my notes with me at the moment, so I will--
I will add that as an addendum to the record. We'll let Ms. Calanda know to note that item. Thank you. 11.0, we are at the point now, action items, 11.01, the approval of Parkway's Comprehensive Assessment Plan for the year 2011, 2012. And Dr. Julie Collins, if you would come forward and help us understand the wonderful report that you prepared for us. And I can't remember if we should-- you want to do the report first and then we can approve the--
That would be great. Thank you.
What am I approving? Is it the CSIP plan or--
Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Feldman, members of the board, Dr. Marty. I am pleased to present to you this evening the annual achievement report for Parkway Schools. Each of you have received copies of the full report, which includes results from the 2010-2011 school year. This evening's achievement results will be presented as baseline data regarding Parkway's five-year strategic plan. To accomplish our mission of all students graduating from Parkway as capable, curious, and confident learners, this board approved last spring 19 measurable objectives designed to focus the implementation and ongoing measurement of our plan. In our annual achievement report this evening, we will focus on Goal One, measurable objectives 1 through 5, as you see listed. It is important to remember that our plan is, in fact, a five-year plan and as such, that each objective begins with the phrase "by 2016." In short, and as you can imagine, we will not yet be able to state mission accomplished at the end of this evening's presentation and that is as it should be, as we have established challenging goals based upon our vision for Parkway students and recognize that it will take the collaborative focus of all of us to accomplish these objectives. The first of the five objectives we will address this evening is that all students will meet or demonstrate growth toward ongoing rigorous transfer goals as measured by assessments within and across all Parkway curriculum areas. Notice that there are several key words and phrases underlined within this objective. Understanding and measuring individual student growth is a vital element of our plan through 2016. While we have work ahead regarding establishing our rigorous transfer goals in all content areas, we have a vehicle by which to measure and monitor student progress throughout the year through district common assessments. District common assessments are created by and for Parkway teachers and are administered periodically to understand how students are performing on curricular objectives. Our district dashboard developed throughout last year has greatly enhanced the ease of access and visibility of our district data, including, as you see here, data for district common assessments. With a simple login from the inside Parkway homepage to the Parkway dashboard, all teachers and administrators are able to quickly and easily access data for their students. The dashboard report you see here provides longitudinal data beginning in 2009 of third graders' progress in math on each common assessment given. Results are formatted in a way that allows us to understand the levels of performance. Below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced are color-coded consistently in vibrant red, yellow, green, and blue, and the trend line is charted for a quick view of student performance on these assessments over time. With a single click on the colored bar, teachers and school teams are able to drill down through the data to understand which students are meeting or exceeding the targets and which students may need additional instruction. In addition to achievement within and across all Parkway curriculum areas, Objective 2 of our strategic plan states our objective that all students will meet Missouri's required proficiency or growth targets on state exams. The measures for this objective are clear to us as they are established by the state and are used for both federal AYP and state APR accountability measures. The exams used for this purpose are math grades 3 through 8 in Communication Arts in Math, math in grades 5 and 8, Science, and of course, exams in Algebra 1, Communication Arts 2, Biology, and Government. The visual display presented for Communication Arts allows us to understand our progress over time against the adequate yearly progress annual targets and across each subgroup of students as identified by the Federal No Child Left Behind Act. Results are represented in terms of the total percentage of students scoring at the proficient and advanced levels of the state assessment map. As you can see from the display, in Parkway, we have made substantial progress over the last five years in Communication Arts. While we would prefer our progress exactly mirrored the trend line of the annual target, which is the red dashed line, we recognize that incremental progress, as might be represented by a staircase, is a more feasible method of progression. Please note the percentages of students at the proficient and advanced levels across the various populations of students in 2006, the first year of revised state standards. Oops, I am so sorry. To the most recent tests in the spring of 2011, in particular, our progress as measured for students receiving a free or reduced-priced lunch is noteworthy, as we have increased the percentage of proficient and advanced results for that group by nearly 19.5% over the past six years. In addition, students receiving special education have shown improved performance of over 18% in the same time span. As with Communication Arts, this display allows us to see our progress in mathematics as measured by the math, map, and Algebra 1, and of course, exams. While we are currently not yet able to state that every student is proficient, which is our goal, our progress is encouraging. In particular, as with Communication Arts, our results with students receiving free and reduced lunch have improved by nearly 21% over the past six years and our students receiving special education have improved over 19%. One of the measures used to monitor district accreditation through our annual performance report is called Gap Improvement. This is a bonus standard that can be earned by those schools demonstrating a closing or narrowing of achievement gaps. Parkway's results for 2011 allowed us to earn the bonus standard in both categories measured. The display before you demonstrates Parkway district minority or non-white student gains from 2010 to 2011 compared to the state majority white student gains annually. While we recognize that our achievement gap remains, we are very pleased with these results, which show that in four of six areas measured, Parkway minority students are far outperforming the gains of the state majority. As with the prior display, this graph demonstrates the performance of Parkway students receiving free or reduced lunch compared with state students who are not receiving free or reduced price lunch. With the exception of students in English 2, Parkway students of lower socioeconomic status have surpassed and in some cases, far surpassed, the gains of students statewide of non-free and reduced lunch status. Based upon our mission and commitment to measuring student growth, Parkway, along with many other Missouri districts, is currently participating in a statewide pilot of student growth measures. Through this pilot, two measures are being tested: value-added and student growth percentiles. As participants in the pilot, our spring 2011 math and end-of-course test results were communicated to us in traditional format as well as using each of the two pilot growth measures. On both measures, Parkway students demonstrated significant growth in both math and Communication Arts for all grade levels included in the growth pilot. Measurable Objective 3 of Goal 1 states that all students will take the ACT and achieve a composite score above the national average with the district average composite score rising to at least 25. It is important to recognize that it is not only the composite average student performance that we are addressing with this objective, but also that every Parkway student will demonstrate performance at or above the national average, which is currently a composite score of 21. To monitor this objective, we examine our ACT results using three methods. The performance of our graduating class overall, the performance of our juniors to whom we administer the test each spring, as well as the predictive data from the PLAN in grade 10 and EXPLORE in grade 8, which are aligned to ACT performance objectives, college and career readiness standards. The first of our ACT reports this evening demonstrates Parkway student performance for the graduating class of 2011. This was the first graduating class to include the testing of all students as juniors in 2010. As demonstrated by the display, Parkway students are well exceeding the state and national averages and compare favorably to the benchmark score established by ACT. Yet, as we know, our district goal for composite score is 25, with a 2011 average composite of 22.9, 2.1 composite score points below our goal. In recognition that Parkway's mission is about all students, it is not enough to view our average scores without also viewing our results disaggregated by ethnicity. As is evidenced within this display, we are experiencing achievement gaps regarding black or African-American and Hispanic student performance compared to the total group. The standards measured by the ACT predictive of future student success in college and career are called the College and Career Readiness Benchmarks. The graph displayed indicates that our students are exceeding Missouri and national averages in all tested content areas as measured by the percentage of students meeting or exceeding the ACT benchmark scores. While college readiness performance is strongest in English, our students are exceeding national and state averages at the greatest rate in both math and science. In addition to our graduating class results, Parkway also provides the ACT to all juniors as mentioned previously. The first administration of this assessment to all students was in 2010. With two years of testing data, we have seen an increase in the average composite for all students from 21.9 in 2010 to 22.3 in 2011, with encouraging increases in the composite scores of African-American and Hispanic students. The display before you demonstrates Parkway's entire junior class of 2011, last spring's juniors, compared to state and national averages. As is evidenced by the display, Parkway students, tested as an entire group, are outperforming both the state and national averages based upon graduate data from the same year. Even as the ACT is one of our measurable objectives for Goal 1 capable students, it is also one of the 14 standards by which we receive accreditation in Missouri. The state standard in this case is directly aligned with our Parkway objective of all students scoring at or above the national average. The state standard for high performance is that 39.1% of graduates score at or above the national average. As you can see, Parkway is well exceeding this standard. On the other hand, we are not yet meeting our district objective toward our mission of all students or 100% reaching this target. As a point of pride, this board and our community should be pleased to understand how we have performed in terms of state ranking of all Missouri districts, in particular, those districts with graduating class sizes of 100 or more. In a statewide ranking of those districts, please note that Parkway boasts the highest percentage, 98.9% of graduates tested, and the third highest percentage of students scoring at or above the national average. As mentioned in the introduction to our ACT objective, Parkway administers the PLAN assessment during the fall of the sophomore year. This test is designed to assist students in understanding their academic strengths and needs and to assess their interests as they prepare for post-secondary pursuits. The graphic display is intended to provide an overview of the average percent of students reaching the college readiness benchmark standards for sophomores in each subject area compared to the same student's ACT performance by the time they graduated in 2010. Also, you will note the comparison of district data for PLAN and ACT with national averages for each content area as well. Ideally, we will monitor student performance using PLAN data and be able to increase that performance by the time each student graduates. As you can see, that is the case for mathematics, science, and our overall composite, but not true for English or reading, even as these are our highest-performing content areas. As the PLAN is a predictor of ACT performance at the sophomore level, the EXPLORE at grade 8 provides an initial view of student strengths and needs in relationship to the college readiness standards. As with PLAN, Parkway students outperform the nation in every tested content area, including overall composite. In addition, student skills improve from grade 8 to grade 10, as evidenced by the increase in college readiness standards mastery in each content area. The fourth measurable objective under Goal 1 is that all students who take an advanced placement or AP exam will score qualified to extremely well-qualified. With that, we will take a look at how our students have performed on advanced placement exams in relationship to this objective. To begin our analysis of advanced placement test performance, it is relevant to note that in Parkway, we have steadily increased the number of AP tests taken over the past five years, with an increase of 383 AP tests taken since 2007. Along with an increase in tests taken, the number of individual students taking these tests has also increased over the past five years by 229 students, reaching a five-year high of 800 students in the most recent year, 2011. Remembering our strategic plan objective that all students earn a score of qualified to extremely well-qualified, we look at the score distribution for 2011 as well as the preceding four years. Please note that an AP exam score of 3 is considered qualified, with 4 as well-qualified and 5 as extremely well-qualified. In 2011, 80% of students taking AP exams earned the score of qualified or greater, indicating that we are 20% shy of our 100% goal. Goal 1, measurable objective 5, within our strategic plan, states that all students will graduate and be well-prepared for their future as measured by the district graduate survey, as well as career and college readiness data. While we are still in development regarding the specific measures we will use, there are two aspects of our state annual performance report that provide relevant data to this objective: college, career placement, and graduation rate. In terms of graduation rate, the Missouri School Improvement Program High Performance Standard is that 89.6% or more of students will achieve graduate status. Parkway's graduation rate in 2011 is 93.7%, well exceeding the state standard. Yet this rate is still more than 6% below the goal of all students graduating. Once our students have graduated, we conduct follow-up contact with each student to understand the path they have selected after graduation. The accreditation standard is based upon the percentage of students who pursue two- or four-year college, enter the military, or are employed in careers related to their career education pathway through high school coursework. Based upon the data gathered, 91.5% of Parkway students are engaged in their intended post-secondary pursuits related to college or career, well exceeding the MSIP requirement of 82.3%. As you can see, this percentage appears to have dropped steadily over the past five years, yet please note that this standard in particular is difficult to gauge, the performance as it is dependent upon the ability to track down graduates 180 days or more after they have left Parkway. In summary, our data journey this evening was focused with intention upon our first goal-- goal, that all students become capable learners who transfer their prior learning to new demands in and out of school. We have established that some measures are already in place by which we are monitoring our progress. In addition, by state and national standards and averages, Parkway is truly a district of excellence. At the same time, true to our mission, we acknowledge that we have a great deal of work ahead to ensure that every student is a capable learner. Achievement gaps are closing, but not as quickly as we would like. And while our achievement scores and graduate data are strong, our mission is not accomplished until we reach 100% for every objective. Which is why there are six goals, not just three. For while it is of utmost importance that we monitor the outcomes of our students, the true mission of our work, we must also honor our commitments as adults to reach those goals for students. Strong professional communities that utilize data, knowledge, experience, and research are working hard every day in our schools and in the services that support schools, such as those who develop and maintain the district data dashboard. We have an exceptional staff dedicated to Parkway's diverse community, and that staff will only become stronger as we increase our diversity of strengths, backgrounds, and cultures, and reach an unsurpassed level of effectiveness through implementation of our new evaluation model. And finally, we commit to using and allocating resources well so that all schools may achieve at higher levels. We are challenged by our mission, and we are excited by its promise. Thank you for your attention this evening and at this time, and perhaps with the assistance of some of my colleagues, we are happy to accept your questions.
Thank you, Julie, very much for that report, and we really, every day, are grateful for the work that you're doing as you get this information. And we're especially interested in the two methods that we're going to be using to measure ourselves, both the value-added and then, of course, the new-to-us will be the growth, which is a very important part, because sometimes we don't give ourselves credit or those kids that have really shown some great progress. Are there any questions from the board for Julie?
Thank you for your report. I'm one that loves numbers, so it's always really interesting to me. My question for you is, will the EOC exams grow as time passes beyond the ones that we're using now?
That's a great question. They actually will. The proposed new standards for MSIP Cycle 5, we're in Cycle 4 right now, include, and I believe it's 11, Kathy will know, she always knows, we will have a total of 11 exams. As to how much those might impact AYP, which was really the data that we focused on tonight, uncertain about that, but there will be additional, and of course, exams in science, social studies, math, and communication arts.
And are they still counting at least 10% towards the students' grade? Or has that number grown?
The number has not grown. That is a district, a local decision that is made, and so, yes, we do have in Parkway procedures in place to count those exams for students' grade, toward their grade.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had a question regarding the MSIP standard on advanced and career education courses. Because I think you had a slide that indicated we had increased the number of AP courses enrolled.
Correct.
But it looks like we dropped more than 10% in one year.
Yeah.
For that combined number.
And you're looking at the report page. It wasn't actually one of the slides that I show tonight.
Right. This was page 17.
Just for those who have a copy of the report.
Right. And actually, I think there's a, I think it should actually be 2010, 2011 on the right side of that graph at the top of the page. Because when I checked against the MSIP reporting, it looked like our percentage for 2011 was a 67.4.
Actually, yes, we do have that. The data is always a year behind on, no, I'm sorry, that's for follow-up. I had to get my head on straight there for a second.
I had to shift my own.
Yeah, it's difficult because some of the standards are one year behind, such as follow-up, we don't have that data. But this one is actually for 2011. And what I will tell you about that, and one of the reasons, I wasn't trying to exclude negative data from the report by any means, it's here in front of you, but this is one in which the criteria has been very slippery and has changed over time. In other words, what it may appear may not be in terms of what the state considers advanced courses or what we're able to report against that, has not been stable over five years' time. So while the data looks like this, we don't feel that that's really accurate in terms of what, it doesn't really reflect the advanced courses that students are taking. So in other words, the state doesn't count everything that we would consider advanced. And that's an ongoing accreditation issue that we work with the state around, but we're still.
That's where the anomaly is, not in career ed or what would be considered those courses. It's mainly in the AP spectrum.
Exactly. AP courses do count within this, but other courses that we would consider advanced courses perhaps do not. There's a list of specified courses that the state has generated over time.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Dee, do you have any questions? Sam?
Is there a test-taking approach or opportunities for students to learn the strategies of taking the ACT? And do all students get an opportunity to partake of that?
I think the answer to the second question may be they have the opportunity, but it may not yet be embedded in what we do. And so, those are efforts that we know, as we work toward that very challenging goal of a composite of 25 and all students reaching 21, that we have some things within our purview within each school that we can really leverage. And, you know, in other words, we have students seven hours out of the day, so what we do with them and how we use strategies within the classroom can really impact ultimately those results. We don't currently have a systemic way that's done. Some schools have kind of stepped out there and have more opportunities, from my understanding at this point, for students to engage in than others. And so, those are things that we're really working on, and Desi's going to come up.
Real quick.
That's okay.
Actually, all four of the high schools do offer ACT prep courses after, in some cases before school. So it's free to students for, we use some of our faculty meetings, but the schools have kind of driven that initiative, the four high schools, and, but they do offer those classes. So those opportunities are there for the students to take some prep courses.
If I can add to that, with my own kids, I, my oldest one, it was one teacher in the high school that had before-school, she offered it to kids who wanted to do it. And by the time my youngest graduated, it was a school-wide, after-school thing. So we've done a little better with that, I think.
Also, test-taking strategies and the classroom assessments, I think just the ongoing understanding of taking and responding to questions that are similar to those that are asked on the ACT are helpful as well to develop the confidence if nothing else.
Absolutely. We talk about there are two features of test-taking. There's the content, so that's the most important. Do you know, do you have the content to be able to apply it and transfer that knowledge in a new situation? But there's also the context. How does it look? And each test is unique, and so there's a bit of that, and we really do prefer that it be embedded, although those additional opportunities are certainly helpful for students and can really help them increase their scores.
Right. Thank you. Beth?
I have another question, and this is about the Carmen Trail single-gender classrooms. Have we had them enough years that we can start analyzing the data to see what kind of differences?
I turned to Dr. Tyson, and he was looking somewhere else. I'm not sure that we had.
I'm not looking at you.
That's what I do when the answer is, "I don't know." I'm not sure that we've begun that evaluation.
Well, how many years has it been now? Does anybody know?
It's probably 17, 18 years.
Is there a name? I can't hear.
I mean, sort of off-years ago, you had to start it, you started first.
Because it, I mean, it looks, I'm just looking at their third grade. I think, did we start in second grade? First grade?
First grade.
I mean, it does look, just from, you know, at a glance, over these past three years that we've grown in advancing proficient in karma, but I can't see, you know, relative to the other schools. So, be interested in that.
Right.
And I'm always interested, since we implemented Prop R and were able to decrease the class size, if there's a good relation, do we have enough data now that we can look at that and say, "Well, how much has it impacted?" Or is it, are there other factors that are more important than that? And the other one, I just would like you to, maybe if you have some response, one of the great ways to see if our kids are confident is if they've actually graduated. And we still have 6%, which means we probably have about 130 students or so out of our graduating classes that don't get that high school diploma. What are we doing about that? And I know it's difficult because you're dealing with the kids that may not want to be there anymore, but they're still part of our Parkway student body.
And as you know and you heard last spring, the alternative programming that we have is phenomenal here. And we do catch many of those students through Missouri Options, PACE, other programs that we have, Fern Ridge. One of the issues that we've been in conversation about and don't have an answer for at this time is, again, with the state and how they're calculating that. Really, they give us credit for the cohort group of students. You need to graduate with your cohort group to be able to be calculated into that graduation rate. There's a long explanation as to why they do that. It sounds very unfair in one sense, but the reality is that districts could call in their dropouts just in time for that accreditation standard and then dismiss them back, not legitimately like that, but just that's how it kind of could work. And so, the state is really forcing our hand to think about graduation within four years when we know that it's just as valuable. If we get the student at year five, year six, but they still get a diploma, that's really what our mission is about. So there's a little bit of reporting issue with regard to that, and we really do need to gather the data and understand, you know, how well are we doing truly with every student if we track every student from the time they entered our system until they did graduate, whether it was five, six years? We hope not. We'd rather they graduate with their cohort as well, but that isn't always the case. So we're wrestling with that right now, not satisfied at all with where we are.
Just to support that, I hope the board might be interested in information in upcoming years that would allow us to revisit the graduating rate of, let's say, 2011 and update that. Because even though the state isn't interested, I think at the local level, we want to continually track students, because right now, the state is really defining time, and we want to say that, you know, that's, that should be more of a variable than a constant. And that's true of so much of what we're going to track. So we've had some interesting discussions about this already, and I think we agree as a team here that we want to look at this. And hopefully, a year from now, we might be able to say, "Guess what? That graduating rate of 2011 is now at 95 or greater, or 96."
That'd be great.
And I think our community would see a value added in that, quite honestly, that we're not giving up on students if they don't graduate with their cohort.
That emphasizes the importance of all to us.
That's right. Absolutely.
Not when, but all.
That's right.
I do have something. I don't know if you're the right person to ask, but I'm going to go for it.
Got lots of people behind me.
The dashboard, which, it's amazing. Have you gotten much feedback? Are people using it yet?
I would say we have tremendously positive feedback. And I can say that and not take any credit. That's okay. I mean, I could, I guess, but I won't.
No trual observer.
I looked at Jason Rooks. If you remember, I'm sure you remember, approving Stoneware. Stoneware is actually, I'm going to talk out of my element, Jason, you may have to come up here. But Stoneware, I call it the storefront. That's what creates the dashboard effect. And then PAR, that you've heard about for several years, still lives in the basement or still lives behind the storefront. And what we've been able to do, I'm really proud of, is to be able to make it, make the data visible, accessible. You don't have to remember a long password. Even if you get lost once you start clicking, you can always go back to the front page and find what you need to find. And so, at some point, maybe, we did not have time tonight to show the whole dashboard, and there's certain confidentiality. We'd have to disguise some student names and all of that. But I think it has already impacted how teachers, principals, how I'm able to use the data, because it's right there, front and center for us, and we're continually refining. We are in no way finished with the dashboard.
Are you in any way, and maybe Jason would know, counting the number of times people are referring to it?
I don't know. Are we?
We can get that information, yes. We have it totally. I don't have a notebook right now.
Well, that's okay. This would be a good time for me, and I said I can take no credit. Jason, with the Stoneware piece, and this has been a complete team effort, Sharon Hennessy, our programmers, Krista Will, Joyce Scarlettelli, Aleem Ahmed, these are amazing people who really have, they can take whiteboarding that we create as a team and turn it into a report that's clickable in ways that we didn't even think of. And so, it's been a fun challenge, and we're going to keep working on it.
Well, I think everyone should be very proud of that effort. It's wonderful.
Thank you. Mr. Majors?
And I guess just a follow-up question on the dashboard and the data, and that would be the, I've read through the common assessments, and it's a comprehensive list, but it's also a comprehensive list. So, impact in the classroom.
Right.
Somebody's got to plug the, do the assessment and plug the numbers in. I saw Julie Peppers earlier, but she may have.
No, you're exactly right, and.
And I guess maybe from the building principles, if there's some perspective on, at some point, we may overburden somebody, is that?
Here's what I can say, and then I'll get out of the way.
Right. Do we have a quality control check on that?
Do I have anyone behind me that's standing? Here's what I would say, and it is, there's no question that when you provide assessment and then you have to score it, you have to do something with the data, put it, and we're asking that teachers put it into a system. I will tell you, this is, you gave me a perfect segue to plug that dashboard, though, because we used to do that, and then the data seemed buried, perhaps. It wasn't very far away. I'm not complaining about anything that was done previously, but teachers did have to go search it out to find it. And now that it's more accessible.
I think there was a disconnect in entry and evaluation.
Right. So now there's an immediate, and I think it's within 24 hours, once that data is entered, it's available. And with our professional learning communities, we are starting to use the data very regularly. I'm sure that's been a longtime practice, but I know that effort has really increased. So I think what we're doing is getting the payoff for the hard work, and we're able to target instruction in ways that we may have been spending our energy designing the wrong kind of lesson for, we weren't on the target because we weren't using data to make those decisions. So time is always about trade-offs. Of course, the assessment coordinator is going to tell you that it's worth the time, but I think, I hope I have a line back behind me that would, a group back behind me that would support that, that it really is. And we do try to, one of the things that we're doing within our district assessment data that's now combined with progress monitoring intervention team, as a district team, we're coming back together to reevaluate our whole comprehensive system. Are we giving the right assessments at the right time? Can we consolidate? Can we get a bigger bang for our bucks so that we're not doing something in math, then doing something in comarts, then doing something in science? If there's a way, and there may not be a way, but we'll try to find that way to make it more efficient for teachers.
I think that was my question. Is there a feedback loop?
Yes, there is. And also through assessment advisory through Project Parkway, what we can learn through that group as well.
Okay.
Uh-oh. There's somebody behind you.
Oh, you pulled out the hammer, yeah.
Clock it. It took how long for her to? This is so critical to the work and to see the line going up. A quick story, I think what, Julie, was our assessment team this year really has to look at what is a district-wide common assessment that comes up on PARs and is reported to you. And when we started that three years ago, it really was which ones come here, which ones stay at the school site, which are just for the team. And so, it's a great question that we have to think about now that we're getting the hang of it, because that also says, it's just not comarts and math, it's common assessment in every content area. But what's interesting, there are teams in schools that are kind of kicking off the PLC process, they're creating their own assessments, which is great, because that's really how the work, what are the needs of the students. And they have come to Julie and said, "But we want it on PARs." So just, there's more than the entry. Seeing it visually, seeing all the teachers on your team, and we really didn't have time. But if you click on those percentage, it's the students. I mean, click on that number of proficient, and it comes up with students, and then you can see all their past data. So think about analysis and what's the right intervention? You're not looking at one data point. There's multiple data points. So I think we're making better instructional decisions. So I thought it was interesting. So a couple of years ago, why are we plugging and chugging? Now that they're doing something different with it, they're saying, "How do we make all the assessments we do visual?" So, just had to add that part.
Any more questions or comments for Julie?
Well, I guess was there any follow-up from a building principal? Well, I guess was there any follow-up from a building principal regarding the assessment overhead? You were sitting right in my line.
I think from my perspective, and part that I wanted to touch base on, just as an add-on, it's not just having the data in or making it visual, but the concept of the PLC. One of the things that I've learned over the last few years, data has no meaning other than what we assign to it. And having teachers working in groups, analyzing that data and assigning that meaning to that data, and what does that mean for our instruction in the short term as well as the long term, is where, over the course of this year, next year, with the formal adoption of a PLC structure, there's multiple prongs that are coming together that make this very exciting. And Sharon Hennessy and John Barrow and Julie recently, just the concept of PARs and seeing where that's come from, and that data analysis being a very labor-intensive effort four years ago in Parkway, and seeing that shift to where the effort's not being put into collecting the data, but now it can really be spent on what does the data mean and how can we use that to support, to support and drive our instruction with kids. So at Central, at a high school level, I think we're just facing some new challenges and really trying to create those opportunities for teachers to be viewing that together. Part of that, some of the reality is teachers used to working in isolation to some extent and learning to have those collaborative conversations. And that's a lot of our focus this year, is just helping teachers engage in those conversations productively so that next year, with that formal change in structures of the later arrival time, we're really able to hit the ground running and really begin to reap the benefits of all of this legwork that's been happening at the, over the last couple of years. And I really didn't have an intention to stay tonight, but I was really just pleased with Julie's presentation and really helped me. How can I continue to bring this back to the building level and help that drive what we do at Central High? So again, I just think it's a really exciting time with multiple pieces coming together. But still a lot of work to do, at least at Central High. But folks are excited about the opportunities and the possibilities.
Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Tim. I want to add too, you know, this is my ninth year in Parkway. It's amazing where we've come from just at my beginning here, in that when our teachers are getting together in our PLCs and using the data from the dashboard in accordance with our progress monitoring coaches, it's phenomenal because the teachers are getting together during their PLC time and they're looking at the data, and then they're using the expertise of the progress monitoring coach. Okay, here's the data, what is it telling us? Well, here's how it's tied into EOC. Here's how it's tied into ACT. Here's the power standard. We expect our teachers to be the content experts. They can't be the data experts. But these progress monitoring coaches are doing just incredible work, working with our teachers during their PLC time on an ongoing and consistent basis to say, okay, this question, this is a question, why did you have this question? Is this valid? Does this help out ACT, SAT? What is the purpose of this? And it's kind of a conversation, it's a great conversation for the teachers. Because they might say, well, it's underlying knowledge that you have to have. It's just a basis for what you do. And that's a great conversation, because we're questioning everything that we do and making sure that what we're doing is best, knowing that that resource of time is finite and knowing that all the ideas we have can be infinite. Make sure we're using the best use of our time and make sure that our assessments are of the best quality to ensure that our students reach vision. So it's an exciting time, and what Julie brought up and all this info, I mean, it's, I think it's, I could talk here for hours, but I think you probably don't want to hear that. So it's a good time.
And I apologize for hijacking, for sidetracking the conversation, but I think my main question was, there has to be a balance. A teacher doing a common assessment is not instructing the entire class, or am I wrong in that?
When they actually administer the assessment?
When they're doing an assessment of an individual student.
Oh, no, common assessments are done in a group setting.
A lot of them are group.
We do have a few assessments that, especially at elementary, that have to be individually administered, but no, these are the one.
I think it's, what role does assessment play in the classroom? And I said this today too, in a conversation with a teacher. I really, when we think about assessment, I think it's been a tremendous area of learning for educators in general over the course of the last five to 10 years, and what that can look like from a day where we take the ACT to quick snapshots in the classroom. It's the feedback and seeing what students are learning can look a variety of different ways. And I think that's the point that Kathy was talking about. What are those assessments that might be longer that get uploaded into PARs and therefore are viewable on the dashboard, which might be more time-intensive? But what other types of assessments are teachers using to get the feedback from kids so that they can adjust their instruction? And I think, again, I just think of my time, the learning that's gone with that and helping to get that balance so that it's not just assessment, but that it's assessment and instruction. I think, again, we're at a good place with that. And then how not to overwhelm the teacher either, but the balance with that also. So I think we're, I feel like we're at a good spot, still learning, but haven't gone too far one way.
Okay. I appreciate that respect.
But now we got the answer. Sorry. I think maybe kindergarten, first grade, it is more individual in small groups.
Now, why would you think I was?
Because I was thinking, you're exactly right. That's what you're thinking. But common assessments, all the way at third grade, it's the whole class takes it, bring the data in. But in kindergarten, first grade, it is small group, one by one. That's what you were asking.
Thank you.
We'll just keep telling you things and, you know, see what you like, but.
I'm taking notes. I'm liking all of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Julie.
If it's okay. I would like to acknowledge someone who will not want me to acknowledge her. Ann Wills is here this evening. And all of the prettiness that you saw within the report, every single chart, graph was created by Ann Wills.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate that report. And Dr. Mitchell, I want you to know, I've been collecting some data too. And I'm not, while seersucker suits and blue cowboy boots make for a very dapper principal, I'm not sure it's affecting much on the football field. But we can hope tomorrow night that you vindicate us. Thank you.
And then comprehensive assessment plan, if you would have any questions regarding that.
Anybody have any questions on our CSAT?
My philosophical question has been answered, so.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for all those comments, and we only saw you twice. I would like to ask for a motion and a second then, that the Board of Education approve the 2011-2012 Comprehensive Assessment Plan as presented in the October 5, 2011 Board Material. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries 5-0. And thank you. We'll move on to Section 13, Work Sessions. We have three things we're going to look at here tonight. 13.01 is our facilities planning 2020. We're excited about this. It's got a lot of people involved, and we think as a board, it's a much better way to organize ourselves so bond money really addresses issues as they come up. And we do a lot of great things, but sometimes we piecemeal, and we really want to put a comprehensive plan together that will really take us where we think we want to be in 2020 or beyond.
I think you're all aware that the facilities department was originally scheduled to perform its program evaluation this year. But you also are aware that Project Parkway and the strategic plan that came out of that recommended that we conduct a facility master planning process. And we actually held our first meeting as part of the September 19 Project Parkway meeting, moving forward with that facilities planning piece. And because we're going to be doing that this year, we're actually recommending that we delay the department program evaluation until we conclude that process. And if you're okay with that.
Absolutely.
Then actually, I'd like to just give you just a brief overview of kind of what's happened in our facilities the last 10 to 12 years, and then kind of where we're recommending we go and make sure that we're understanding what you want us to do as we move forward. We've been very, very fortunate to pass three bond issues over the past 12 years. In '99, we passed a $32 million, our voters approved a $32 million bond issue. In '04, they approved again a $75 million bond issue. And then in '08, they approved an $87 million bond issue. We're now, or actually, we just concluded the third year of projects being constructed from the 2008 bonds. And actually, we just, over the past 12 months, completed a little over $26 million in projects within our buildings. Unfortunately, what we also know is that we're a very large organization. We have 32 buildings, 33 buildings with over 3 million square feet under roof. And what we believe, or what we're projecting, is that over the next 10 years, we'll actually have capital replacement needs that will, again, exceed $100 million. We have been, or the work that has been done has been very beneficial. We've eliminated most of the HVAC issues that we experienced prior to all of this work. Our roofs don't leak anymore. We've improved the security of our buildings. And I'm not sure if, has all of the orange shag carpeting from the 70s been removed? We've gotten rid of most of the old shag carpeting. We have improved learning environments, and we have safer schools. But one of the things we know is that we believe we can do a better job if we plan a little more in advance of, than what we have done in the past. And what we're recommending is, is we work through this facility planning process, and we actually look at developing models for major instructional area improvements or even any other, any major capital improvements in the district, so that we can actually do the planning and develop a fully, a full scope for projects before we actually are trying to develop budgets for those projects. So I guess what we're suggesting is that, you know, and I think this came from Project Parkway, is that we have a more strategic approach in looking towards facility improvements in the future, that we determine the needs of the district as it relates to the educational process, the community, the environment, energy consumption, and technology. And that whatever recommendations we make, that they're sustainable moving forward. So the facilities 2020 master planning process, the way we understand your direction to us is that we would, this group of staff, parents, citizens, would actually develop a facility master plan, a recommendation for moving forward with facilities, that would present a preliminary report to you by June 1 next year, that any recommendations in that report would be categorized or prioritized by either, you know, musts, things that absolutely have to happen over the next 10 years, needs, things that we believe really need to happen, and then also some projects that would probably be included that we think would be very nice to happen, but we would categorize those as wants. And essentially, that's the way we understand our direction. And tonight, we really just wanted your input and to confirm whether or not we're moving in the right direction or not.
Well, I'll let the other board members say some things too. I think one of the things that we've talked about as a board too, is that sometimes we do good things, but sometimes it's more of a Band-Aid rather than fixing what is the, you know, if you look at an area like fine arts, and there are many good things we can do there, but if we had a more strategic plan there, then we might solve a bigger issue that helps students a lot more. And maybe some of it involves things outside of the district, too, partnerships and things. But when we come to facilities, we think maybe we can find ways to spend this money, you know, the very best way that we can, by thinking a little bit more forward-thinking and a little bit more outside the box, too. So I'm looking for a plan that would come back and that would tell us, you know, what's the best way to use the money that we're given? We know we could spend a billion dollars if we could raise it, and we'd do good things with it, but we're probably going to have something much less than that. So how can we really fix, what is the real need in fine arts, or science, or math, or some of the other areas? And how can we use these facilities better? So maybe some of the planning that you'll do will also be challenging us to, you know, think of our high schools as campuses that we use better. And that could be something that would factor into the things that you're doing.
Sure.
How do you plan to do a facilities audit, or how do you determine per building, what would be the process that you'll go through to determine the needs, the musts, and the wants?
Well, we will start with our facilities, what do you call it? The VFA database, which actually, we have a database that has all of our major systems in it already, and they're aged, the equipment is aged. So our HVAC systems, we can project what our actual, I think, musts, many of the musts are going to be moving forward. What we'll have to do then is try to work with a task force that will hopefully, I'm assuming we'll work with teachers and folks in the buildings to actually determine what it is we think we do need. I'm going to turn this over to someone that probably has a better answer for that.
Just to add a build on that, we did it in 2004, we did a comprehensive outside audit of the district. It was about half a million dollars. There was a mechanical, electrical plumbing was one part of that. Roofing was another in sight, was another in sight, included all of our asphalt walks, concrete walks and the like. That information was all implemented, was put into VFA, which is a web-based database. In 2008, we did an internal recheck of all that data. So internally, we went back and checked that data to confirm that some of the work that we'd done between 2004, 2008, we had to make sure that was in there, as well as were our priorities still correct in the database, and then those were adjusted. So we're very comfortable with, and that's for, that's for every HVAC, every rooftop unit, every plumbing system. It's all sorted. Last year, we did an internal review of all of our restrooms, 540 restrooms, and those have all been, outside of this, all been rated, and also that was then put into VFA. So we feel comfortable from the maintenance and repair replacement side that we've got good data and that it really truly means something. When it comes to the educational side, that's the area that we are, I mean, Scott and I are jumping up and down for joy from the standpoint of having that dialogue and deciding where this district wants to go, and then scoping and budgeting those projects out beforehand so that when we do actually do the implementation of those projects, we've got good projects with good numbers.
Great. Thank you.
I guess I would just, I could just add to that. I think one of the real goals here is to really, you know, the whole purpose of the 2020 idea is to make sure that as we make decisions, we're making good educational decisions, and that while there may be a recommendation to make an improvement, is that coincide with Project Parkway's goals? Does it coincide with good educational practices, the future of technology, good environmental practices, those things that Mark had listed before really need to be played out here? So I think as resources become, you know, tougher. So I think as resources become, you know, tougher in some cases, and we have to make good decisions, we're trying to think merry facilities planning with our Project Parkway. So there's a, there's a nice match educationally. So Sam, I think you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, how are we making those ultimately decisions? Is this a really a kind of a check to make sure they really are decisions that we could be, feel good about today and will feel just as strongly about in 2020?
But also, accounts for, I'm looking at bulletin boards that get, you know, messed up from time to time, some of the atmospheric, environmental kinds of things that are not major components of a building, you know, how do we look at all of that to, you know, make necessary repairs and that kind of thing? Or replacements of various things that need to be replaced?
We work closely with the schools. I mean, through our work, our system, those, those issues are, are sent to us electronically. I meet with the principals every year individually with each principal. We talk about their custodial staff, their ground staff, are their maintenance staff doing things? What major issues do you have with your building? What do you want to see us handle? We do get into who's going to pay for our issues on occasion, and those we bring up with Mark or, or myself or the principal, we work through those. But those things are just generally handled, those are, I would say, more day-to-day things that our folks are working with the schools on, on a regular basis.
Regular basis, yeah, great, thank you.
Have to compliment you, too, because even though we, Project Parkway is forcing us to look at things differently, and, but we're in great shape. I mean, we look at some of our buildings, and it's hard to realize that some of them are 40, 50 years old, and many of the problems that were so prevalent, I mean, things as silly as roofs leaking, they're fairly infrequent now, and usually takes a pretty heavy downpour. A lot of those things are really, you know, our schools are in much, much better shape.
That's what I was going to say. Okay. I remember walking through Belgrade Elementary around trashcans when it was raining. I mean, you don't see that, and that's, that's great. And we always have to thank our taxpayers for that bond issue, so we can, those bond issues. But a thing that I think is going to be hard to maybe quantify, and it's more subjective, but I think it's very important, is inequities between buildings. And I think it's something we need to address long-term. And I just think we have to keep remembering it, because we have certain buildings that are in great shape, they're conducive to how we teach, there are others that need a lot of work, and I think we have to remember that.
Everybody wants a food court. Any other questions?
I think just to the, Mr. Jacobs, you mentioned the potential of factoring in partnerships. And I guess my question for Dr. Marty and for you would be, must, the committee is supposed to come up with musts, needs, and wants. How far should that discussion get into solutions? Like with outside entities and partnerships with municipalities, what, I don't want to draw too narrow a box, but-
I mean, I think we have to-
Should the charge to the facilities planning 2020 be broader than, than what's listed here, to start treading into solutions, or?
Well, I do think we need to take a look at, and look into opportunities to, to partner with communities in the area or other organizations. I think we're, you know, it's going to be challenging doing that, given the current economy, because, I mean, most, all governmental entities are struggling, and I think you're going to see fewer capital projects moving forward. But, but I think it's something we have to, to look for. So yeah, I would say that a part of this process, we have to reach out and see if there are opportunities that, you know, I wish I were more hopeful.
But is this the appropriate stage to, to do that, or is that something that should be after June 1st?
No, I think that's a great question, and I think, as, as, you know, Mr. Jacob has kind of mentioned, it's, it's, you know, as we get into tougher, you know, equity is important, but are we going to be able to do something at all for high schools? Or do we have to make some choices that says, improvements were made at this high school, and we'll have to look differently at how we offer programs? I mean, I'm not trying to solve problems, or, but, but those are some of the issues. And are there community entities that would partner with us for various curricular opportunities? You know, is there ways to do that? Communities around the country are doing that type of thing, and I think we ought to be open to that, whether it's, you know, business partners to municipalities to, so I think we ought to really, because, I mean, we ought to keep exploring, is there other ways to do this? And do it well, and do it with quality.
You know, Julie was talking about AP courses, and that maybe there's an opportunity to teach an AP course out at Monsanto, or other places around the, you know, where, where we use some of their scientific gurus, and just things to think about.
I would, I would also hope that as, as we think about our, about upgrading our facilities, we could partner with people who could come in and use our facilities as well. You know, our facilities are open at night, or could be open at night for other groups to use. So as we think about upgrading our facilities, a room like this could be certainly available for a lot of public and community use.
And then I guess the other, the other point would go to, I think Paul Tandy shared with us some projections from circa 19, Paul, when was that?
1992.
92, so I, that timeframe's a little broader. But if you look at the, the enrollment numbers for a lot of our schools, and even more strikingly, the projected enrollments going out 10 years, I certainly salute forward-thinking, however, comma, stuff can change in a hurry, demographically and financially and a lot of other ways. So I think we've got to temper the, temper everything with a sharp, sharp eye on the weather and, and other factors in our communities, so.
Okay. That's a great report. We look forward to hearing, you know, some of the stuff that happens over the next little while. I know you've got great people to help in the input, not just the internal Parkway people, but other people that are going to help, too. So I think it's the, definitely the right thing to do, so that as, as we spend that money later, everybody, including the community, knows where we're, where we're headed. I would mention, too, I really like the idea that we can go online and look at some of the stuff that's been done. I really like the, when I can click on a before and after picture, and I know if that means a lot to me, it could probably mean a lot more to a taxpayer that's kind of wondering what. So the more you can do that, the better, because that's very instructive, and like they say, a picture's worth a thousand words, even when it's HVAC.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before Dr. Tyson, before you can, you can kind of mosey up, I just want to recognize some of these students that have been here tonight, especially those that have hung on, I think a few left a few minutes ago, and I wanted to recognize them, and I kept forgetting. Where are you all from? All from Maryville? Okay, well, we welcome you here tonight and hope that it's instructive and, and helpful to you in, in what you're trying to do.
More coffee available.
13.02 and 13.03, we'll start with 13.02. This is going to be a discussion on our Gifted and Mosaics program, and Dr. Tyson, you put this off last month, and we appreciate it, and we look forward to, to what you can present to us tonight.
All right. See if we can get this technology working. All right, very good. All right, well, President Jacob, Vice President Feldman, esteemed Board of Directors, and Superintendent Marty, I'm always happy to be here with you and to speak with you and work with you. Maybe before we get into that first conversation, though, about Gifted, if I could just go back to the question you asked Julie about Carmen Trails and the single gender education, I, I know that you guys also asked about that last year. I remember that distinctly, and feeling a little bit like I'm putting you off. So I want to let you know that I will go ahead and, and meet with Beth Wendling, and we'll discuss that in some depth, and I'll hope to get some results to you soon regarding that, the achievement there at Carmen Trails and single gender education.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, and, and also, I don't know if you guys are big balloonists, but I remember the Forest Park balloon race, and not being from around here, I'm from Wisconsin, just like Dr. Marty, but it's always nice to come here and have neat events going on. And so I'm reminded of the balloon race last month, and I'm constantly reminded about evaluations, because that's what I'm working a lot. And it reminds me of a story. So I know that you guys-
Good.
-are all fans of stories. I just wanted to share a quick story with you. There was a man in a hot air balloon, and he realized that he was lost. And so he reduced his altitude some and spotted a woman below. And he descended a bit more and shouted down to the woman, he said, "Excuse me, can you help me? I promised a friend I would meet him an hour ago, but I don't know where I am." And the woman below replied, "You're in a hot air balloon hovering approximately 30 feet above the ground, you're between 38 and 39 degrees north latitude and between 90 and 91 degrees west longitude." The balloonist said, "You must be an evaluator." She said, "I am, how did you know?" "Well, everything you told me is technically correct, but I have no idea what to make of your information. And the fact is, I'm still lost. Frankly, you've not been much help so far." So the woman below responded, "You must be a manager." "I am," replied the balloonist, "but how did you know?" "Well," said the woman, "you don't know where you are or where you're going. You have risen to where you are due to a large quantity of hot air. You made a promise which you have no idea how to keep, and you expect me to solve your problem. And the fact is, you're in exactly the same position you were in before we met, but now somehow, it's my fault." So with that as a lead-in. I think that cuts both ways, I enjoy that. I hope you did as well. Preliminary discussion for Gifted, and last time, I kind of went through a big spiel about sort of how we come up with these main topics, and how we come up with the guiding questions, and we got together over the summer with some folks, some administrators, and some teacher friends, and, and basically decided what are the key things that we need to be looking at when we do program evaluations for each of these specific areas. Tonight, we have Gifted and Science After Gifted. And so the main topics that were established or decided upon are these, we have five of them. The first one is identification, second is levels of service, the third is the Mosaics Academy, the fourth is student achievement, and the fifth is overall program satisfaction. And so the point is to try to use these as sort of our main, if we were writing a report, these would be the main headings in the report. And so these are our main topics. And then with, within each of these main topics, we want to have some guiding questions that really help to guide the, the things that we're looking at, how we can best answer these questions, maybe surveys that we can put out, or experts in the field that we can get in touch with, who can help answer some of these questions for us, so that we can make good decisions and improve our program, our Gifted program. And so for identification, the first one is, what is the process used to identify students? How do students move between the levels? Are the tests for identification valid and administered by people who are trained? Are minority students identified, and are they successful? And is identification and testing consistent and timely? And so as you're thinking maybe about this broad topic, this broad topic of identification and these guiding questions, you know, at the end, I'll, I'll ask you if you have some other ideas, maybe specifically about identification, or, you know, and maybe some, some questions that could go here, or maybe you'll have additional main topics that we can talk about. But just if you could kind of be thinking about that as we're going through, that would be fantastic. Our second main topic is levels of service. For levels of service, the first, I mean, some of these questions really are pretty basic, but I think maybe revisiting and making sure we have complete answers for each of these will be very helpful. What are the four levels of mosaic service? How do we meet the academic and affective needs of each child? How do we identify students for the different levels? How are mosaic services implemented in the elementary, middle, and high schools? How do curricular needs differ among the various mosaics levels and buildings? And then what support is available for students, teachers, and parents? There's a lot of things sort of parenthetically there, but those are the main ideas, really the main questions that we want to, to use to guide our thinking. Mosaics Academy is our third main topic. Once again, some basic questions, but just to, to help us sort of, you know, it's always important to have a handle on, on even these basic questions before we dive into sort of the more, the more deep ones. How many students are in the program? How much do these students grow over time? We talked a little bit about assessment, and especially growth data, which we're getting back from the state, so maybe applying that to Mosaics Academy students. How is curriculum and instruction different in the Mosaics Academy? How are classrooms different there? What is the benefit, impact of having the Mosaics Academy in Parkway? Are students being, needs being met? If so, how? If not, why not? And then student achievement, how do Level 3 and 4 students perform on the map? So then we make some comparisons with all Parkway students, with other Gifted students in Missouri. How do Level 3 and 4 students perform on Parkway Common Assessments, which we spoke about earlier with Julie Collins? Compare them to all Parkway students. And what other academic indicators do we have regarding Levels 3 and 4 that we can look at? And then finally, our final main topic for the Gifted is this overall program satisfaction. And really, the, the teachers, when they worked on this part, kind of focused in on what kind of questions maybe can we ask? So that's kind of how we set it up here. How are the Gifted child's needs being met in the regular classroom and then in the Gifted classroom? What are the benefits of the Gifted program? Is the amount of time the Gifted specialist is in the building, meeting the needs of the staff? Is the amount of time the Gifted specialist is in the building, meeting the needs of students? What would we see continued? What should be eliminated? And then the final slide here, just some questions maybe for Gifted staff. Obviously, we'll have some more, but these are the ones sort of under this overall program satisfaction heading. How supported is your program by these various groups, administrators, staff, and parents? Do you have a designated classroom for Gifted instruction? Does it meet the needs of the Gifted program? Questions for general education teachers, how does the Gifted specialist support learning in your classroom? And do you have adequate resources to meet the needs of Gifted students? And then finally, questions for parents, what is the biggest strength of the Gifted program, and what is the most important weakness of the Gifted program? So those are really our main topics that we have, and our guiding questions. And I hope you've had maybe some, some time to think about these a little bit, and any feedback you'd like to offer at this time, any questions that you have maybe about this approach that we're taking, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Nathan, is there any, any consideration that might be given to Gifted programs that are throughout the region, other, like, I know Lindbergh has PEGS, and other districts might have something, how do we, you know, how do they do? What, what good things are they doing that maybe we're not?
You mean that, okay, very good, yeah. Sort of the idea of other experts, or people who are doing this well in other districts. You know, we certainly have, I've been talking with Becky Litherland about science, and she's been quickly setting things like that up, getting experts involved, and I'm sure me, Denise Pappil and myself will, will also do the same here with, with Gifted programs throughout, throughout the state, at least in, on the St. Louis side, you know, whoever's, whoever's most available and that we've heard good things about. But certainly, that's a great, some great feedback.
Which side wants to start?
Yeah, I know, there is criteria for identification to be in the program and all, but what about the student who is almost there in terms of meeting the identification criteria that we know is very, very bright, very capable, needs something different on a regular basis, other than maybe the regular classroom, where they don't get the differentiation instruction that they should receive? So what about that student that's just borderline and just doesn't quite get in the program?
I actually know some great things are happening, especially with, with African-American students, but I'm not the best person to talk to, so if Denise could maybe approach. That's a, that's a great question.
Okay, great. We're not answering questions right now, okay?
That's a great question, dead silence.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
But no, we are doing things, but we'll just look into it further and get back to you in more detail.
My turn? Okay, I have a couple of questions for you. What are we doing to meet the special social and emotional needs of some of our more gifted students, our exceptionally gifted students, I think, really have some different rates of development socially and emotionally? And how are we meeting those needs?
Okay.
How do we place the kids, I'm talking about the kids at Mosaics Academy? Are they placed according to the age, their grade, or actually their abilities? Are we following the graduates in a special way? Are we keeping track of our Gifted students' progress as opposed to our regular students' progress? Do we have different resources that our Gifted teachers need? Do we have different resources that our Gifted teachers need that we can go above and beyond what we're currently doing to better equip them to teach this special group of kids? And my last question is, what kind of professional development are we offering, are building Gifted teachers, so that they can really be brought along and, and learn the more specific issues associated with teaching Gifted kids?
Good que, all good questions. Dee?
Well, I'm beating a dead horse. Well, it's not a dead horse, but I'm saying the same thing I said to you last time, I think. And that is, we need to consider Project Parkway and how are we meeting the goals of Project Parkway?
Good.
I hope we'll include that in.
Sounds good. I'm sure we will.
How far do we think we'll take Mosaics? Is it going to start very young and maybe go all the way or?
That's a great question and we'll get back to you on that.
I guess I'd just leverage off some of the, the earlier comments as far as, you know, what, what are available as far as benchmarks and, and how are we looking? Resources being applied relative to, you know, percentage of overall population. And I think that drives back to the equities across the board.
Very good.
And so I think hard to, hard to encompass all of that, but I think it's something that from Project Parkway, we've got to quantify to some degree.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions? So where are we? No, just kidding.
Actually, if you, actually, if you don't mind, I would like to relate a quick story just to, there's a, there's a Gifted student in Parkway, actually, a middle schooler named Danny, who I was talking to. And he said that he was walking through the Chesterfield Mall, I think it was last Friday, and he had a couple of big suitcases with him. And he's dragging these suitcases along. And, and a man came up to him, a very official business-looking man came up and said to him, you know, do you know what time it is? And Danny kind of can hardly believe he's asking this, he's got these two big heavy suitcases. And so he checks his watch and, you know, sets the suitcases down, checks his watch, tells him, well, it's seven fifteen. And, and the man said, wow, that's a, that's a really neat watch. That's amazing. And Danny got kind of a twinkle in his eye, being a Gifted kid and really smart. And he said, yeah, you know, I've actually, I made this watch. And, and he talked about, it has all the, you know, kind of the smartphone applications and you can get video and you can get TV and, and all this stuff on it. It has a translator on it, you know, I'm taking two foreign languages and a third one after school. And so I use it to do my, my, my different foreign language homework. And, you know, every now and again, because I work so hard on, on my homework and all that, I have to have fun with my friends. So it even has this neat feature where you can set it down on the ground and it kind of shoots out like this disco ball sort of lights and it'll play this really cool music. And so everyone's dancing and, you know, he can have fun with his friends with this watch. And the, the man is just looking, he just can't believe it. He's like, how do you do this? You're like a middle school kid. And, and so then, so then Danny says, yeah, you know, actually, I, I also, I've even programmed it with different voices. So like has my, I have a principal voice and I have a parent voice and, and I can scare my friends. So like if they're messing around at lunch and doing something, you know, throwing some food or something, I can get my watch to say, hey you, what do you do? You know, in a principal voice. And the guy is just amazed. And then finally, Danny says, and the biggest sort of the crown jewel of this whole thing is I've, I've got that Watson computer, you know, the IBM Watson computer that, that participates in Jeopardy. I've programmed that into this watch. And the guy at that point says, I've got to have this watch. I will pay you $3,000 for this watch. And Danny says, well, you know, it's, it's really not ready yet, there's still some bugs in it, just not ready, not ready to go, to go live with it yet. So I'm working on it, but not, he said, I will give you $8,000 for this watch. I'm ready to write a check right now. And Danny says, well, you know, it's not ready yet, there's these bugs and I've already spent like 10,000, you know, getting, getting it to where it is. And the man says, I will write you a check for $15,000 right now. I need to have this watch. And so Danny says, okay, well, 15 grand, I'm going to take it. So the man writes him a check. He undoes the watch. He, he gives the watch to, to the man and the man turns to walk off and Danny, Danny says, hey, wait, where are you going? He taps his suitcases and says, you forgot your batteries.
Oh, boy.
That's how smart our kids are in Parkway, especially our Gifted ones.
President Jacob, I think you have a run for your money with your story.
He's been my mentor.
There's a place for you on the board.
All right. So having said all that, we are now ready to talk about science. And here's our preliminary discussion for science. So once again, we'll try to hold to the ground rules of, you know, any, any questions that you have, we will certainly note down, but, but do our best to not respond tonight, but then we will go ahead and use those and incorporate them into our study and our, and our, and our planning for this evaluation. Preliminary discussion for science. The main topics that were established and actually, Dr. Litherland, you know, she, she had the administrators together over the summer, but then she also met, and I met too, with the elementary teachers and also with secondary teachers. So we got lots of feedback for science. The main topics here, mission and vision, which I'm sure Ms. Mogerman would be happy to see. Course content sequence, guaranteed viable curriculum, instructional methods, assessment, student achievement, student prep and college readiness, technology and professional development collaboration. These all come from our administrative group. And these are the ones that we're actually going to work through tonight and just quickly touch on the, the main, sort of the guiding questions for each of these main topics. But then at the very end of this presentation, I'll also show you what the elementary teachers came up with in terms of their main topics, and then what the secondary teachers came up with in terms of their main topics, which we'll also try to weave into the overall study. Mission and vision. So really, just looking at Project Parkway, mission and vision, and then comparing science department goals and are the science department goals supporting the district mission and vision? Does the science department vision align with and support the district mission and vision? And then does the curriculum as well as course sequencing and departmental practices align with district mission and vision? So really, the, the idea of alignment, getting everything consistent with, with Project Parkway, with the mission and vision of the school district. Course content and sequence. Really, after completing one science class, are the students left wanting to take another class, another science class? This one, you know, probably be good for us in terms of developing any student surveys. Should Parkway provide students with the option to participate in an accelerated science program? What are the strengths and weaknesses of ninth grade science program? Should Parkway return to year-long, single content courses at the middle school level? Should the course sequence be common at all of the high schools? To what degree does science align with GLEs, CLEs, plan, explore and ACT? And to what degree do science courses challenge students? In other words, getting at the rigor. Guaranteed and viable curriculum. Are teachers faithfully implementing the curriculum according to our OCG? Do teachers have enough time to implement the guaranteed curriculum? Do all students receive the guaranteed courses, interventions and special needs alternatives? If not, why aren't they? And how is the quality of units on the OCG? Instructional methods. Guiding questions here. Does departmentalizing at the elementary level increase student achievements? See a lot of that at the middle and high school levels. Maybe would it work at, at elementary? Are there opportunities to teach science across the curriculum? In other words, are we into, is the curriculum integrated? Should we prioritize disciplines? And how do we make up for the learning gaps that may result from science pullouts? Pullouts obviously is a controversial thing. When, when do kids get pulled out for, for different special programs? It's not just Parkway, this, this seems to be a problem in many different school districts. So it's a, a good question to ask about learning gaps that may result from those. Assessment. How well are our formative and summative assessments aligned to the district objectives? How well do our current assessments predict future performance? To what degree does our current assessment system assess transfer of learning? And what assessment types and methods are currently used? How do teachers decide what assessments to use? Student achievement. Once again, tying in mission, vision and learning principles to student achievement. Looking at criterion reference tests like the MAP, the OC. Also looking at individual student performance on assessments like explore, plan and ACT. Does science coursework cause students to be capable, confident and curious? Does it prepare them for the next level? Are students encouraged to take more classes and do they feel challenged? Do students and teachers understand purpose and outcomes? And do teachers provide ongoing feedback to improve student performance? Does grading help students to achieve mastery? Student prep and college readiness. What are the curriculum concepts required by the ACT? What benchmark standards or targets should be assessed and when? What are the general science concepts required to be successful in entry-level college classes? What professional development is required or available for teachers? Technology, is our technology safe? What technologies ensure that all students achieve in science? And what technical skills should all students have to be successful in science? And then finally, professional development collaboration. How well are we using data to impact individual student instruction? And then finally, does, do science teachers believe they're receiving professional development that will help them to become better teachers? If so, what kind is it? If not, what do they need? As promised, here are the second, secondary teachers' main topics. And like I said, we won't go through questions that they developed, but rest assured, they developed them and, and we'll try to make sure that we, we integrate. But they came up with some other very good main topics. Some are the same or maybe some different wordings, but, but the, you know, obviously you're going to have a slightly different approach when teachers look at it versus administrators. So here, curriculum articulation was important, the structure of middle school courses, skills and process, rigor, struggles, student happiness with science, teacher DOK, business and higher education outreach, other student opportunities beyond the classroom. And then here are the elementary teachers, attitudes of administrators and others, content knowledge and PD, assessment, implementation of the curriculum, tool use, transfer and other opportunities. And then finally, communication between parents, teachers and administrators and students. And that's it. So any kind of feedback that you may have at this time, we would be pleased to hear that.
I'm impressed, boy, if we could answer those questions.
We've got, yeah, we've got some good teachers and administrators coming up. They know what, they know the right questions. So now it's just a matter of can we, can we get there? Can we gather the data? Can we answer the question?
Later, I'll tell you about the evaluator that went into the bar, pulled a little, pulled a little tiny grand piano out and little mouse, tuxedo on this side, the canary. We'll talk about it.
See what you did.
Are there any questions for? Okay, we'll start with Bruce this time.
Okay. I guess I just, I noticed from earlier going over the achievement data, that the benchmark score on the ACT for science is a 24, while reading is a 21, mathematics a 22 and English an 18. We talked about the assessments and we talked about the ACT, but what is that, I guess if the, if the national benchmark is noticeably higher in science, then, does that have a, a universal significance to this evaluation?
Well, when you say that, it just sounds to me like, like in terms of what gets kids ready for college, we need to up the rigor of science. I mean, based on what ACT is at least telling us based on these benchmarks, because I think that's how they do the benchmarking, is what do students need to, to be successful in college? And so I just, I think that, that it means kids maybe are coming to college without quite the rigor, maybe the depth of, of science knowledge that they should have. Which actually, at our last Project Parkway meeting, we had a, a panel, a distinguished panel come from higher education members, different professors and things like that who came and were able to speak to what should Parkway teachers and, and students be covering, you know, before, before kids get to college. But, but yeah, we will definitely, once again, look into more specifically, and I know we did mention that already about benchmarking, but, but that was a great comment and, and I think, I think it's interesting.
And then I think the, the outside opportunities was mentioned as, and I guess my thought, based on the group that's already engaged, should we think of those as outside opportunities or partners to bring in as far as the industry, the universities around?
Yes. Partners.
Two-way street. Partners, not just?
Yes. Agreed.
The other.
You're right.
Okay. That's it.
This may be a somewhat delicate topic, I don't know, but I think it's important.
So it's a good thing we're not answering these.
I know. I know, you have them.
My lips are sealed.
I know we have differences in our science programs in our high schools. I would like to see if there's a difference in achievement with the students and with the different programs. And I think it's a little too early for this, but I'm going to throw it out there anyway. We have a new science addition at Central High and some more forthcoming. And in the future, I think it's too early, but I'd like to see if that's making a difference in our achievement.
Okay.
Don't you think it's too early though?
Yes.
One year is not.
I do, yeah. Beth?
Well, hopping off of that point, since you did steal my point about that.
I'm sorry.
You know, it's been one of my pet peeves ever since I found out, and I think I've got it right, Becky, help me if I'm wrong, that they teach three semesters of biology at South High? Is that right? And two semesters, I think, everywhere else? Yeah? So since we have an EOC in biology, I'd like to know if the kids at South High are outperforming the kids at the other three high schools. I'd like to know what the kids at South High are missing in that semester, if it's chemistry or physics, and how they achieve on chemistry and physics later on when they get to be juniors and seniors. So that's hopping off that point. Becky gave us a list of the course offerings in the different high schools. And I guess my, my curiosity is, who decides, with, you know, those more specialized classes, who decides what is offered where? And do we have trouble staffing those different, different kinds of classes than the regular core?
Okay.
I'd like to know if there's a way to possibly survey graduates to see who pursues science careers.
Okay.
The difference in the rigor between our honor science classes and our regular science classes is the difference too, too, too big? Are we turning off some kids to deeper study of science by making the rigor too hard? And are our regular kids bored?
Okay.
Lab work. Do we do enough? Do we do too much? How do we assess our lab work? I was in with that panel at Project Parkway and I heard those, those college professors all complimenting our students, saying they wish they had more students like Parkway students, incoming science students. But are, are students that don't pursue science as a career or a major in college, are they prepared for the basic? In other words, not our most interested science students? And then the, another thing that came up that night with that panel was professional development for our elementary teachers who teach science, because I think I heard them say that a lot of them are not given the content when they're studying in college. Whereas our middle school and high schools teachers are well-versed in the content, are we doing a service to our, or disservice to our elementary students by not having their teachers better informed with content?
Good luck. Thank you.
This, one question is related to what Beth asked, relative to the fact, what is the most appropriate instructional methodology, strategies for teaching science? And are they utilized in our program, essentially? The other thing is, how do we integrate mathematics into the science program and vice versa, along with research? What role does research play in the science program? And the other thing, I, I think some of what I've, I've read and learned over the years, being a middle school principal and all, that middle school is probably the time that kids could really get turned on and excited about science. So what are we doing in the middle school level to really have the resources, teachers who have the ability to teach it at a, a very high quality, exciting level for students, more hands-on for students at that level to really get them excited about science in terms of a future career or just get excited about it?
Good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions to add? Nathan, we thank you so much for.
Thank you for having me.
Being a, a good egg.
I'm here for you.
And we really, really appreciate the, the work that's gone into this and we're confident that when we get the final report, that there'll be some neat things that'll help set curriculum and.
Good.
And hopefully energize and get kids more involved in these two areas.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And thanks to everybody else who's part of these two programs too.
You're here.
All right, we're coming to the end. 14.0 policy review, believe it or not, there is none tonight. 15.0 call for a special meeting, none. 16.0 call for executive session, November 2nd, 2011. It asks for a motion. It asks for a motion and a second that the Board of Education call for an executive session including any record or vote on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2011 at 6:30 PM and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of one, considering legal action, causes of action or litigation involving the district and any confidential or privileged communication.
So moved.
He's not on, he's not.
Oh, sorry.
Between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610 dot 021 dot 1. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting a particular employee by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610 dot 021 dot 3. Three, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings and the records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610 dot 021 dot 13.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
One second. Okay. Mrs. Feldman. Yes, Mr. Major.
Yes.
Mrs. Mogerman, yes. Dr. Sortino.
Yes.
Mr. Jacob.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. 17.0 recess, close meeting. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0.
How about the opposed?
Say opposed.